Mr. Jevon Angelo? Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolford?
Here.
Mr. Scupora?
Present.
Mr. Bolneri?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Present.
Six present. And the approval of the minutes from the June 10th, 2013 meeting, please, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes from the June 10th, 2013 meeting be approved and accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk. They will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
I second that, Madam Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. May I have the motion to approve fiscal department reports and pay bills for the month of June 2010?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Wolford, second.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bolneri, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Come do the special. Here, we have a special recognition now for the Latrobe Kinder Scholl. Okay, this is a commendation. Whereas the Latrobe Kinder Scholl recently achieved the highest level of recognition for quality early care and education, Keystone S.T.A.R. four, and whereas while working to achieve this status, they also fulfill the requirement of the national recognition from the National Association for the Education of Young Children, accreditation. Whereas these fantastic achievements are obtained through the hard work and dedication of the owner, director, support staff, and especially the teachers working with all young children. Now therefore, may I ask the citizens of Latrobe, recognize and commend the late Okay, now we have time for citizens' requests and comments.
Jim Bolton, 225 Irving Avenue. Your last meeting, your agenda meeting was interesting. I didn't see anything new, though. I didn't see any great changes. I didn't see any way except save money, except get rid of two fire companies. Three and five. It was interesting. The Latrobe Fire Department began in 1878 in this town. And the other companies were formed after that, and by 1908, they went under one umbrella, Latrobe-Baldje Fire Department. Up until the 1970s, 90 percent of the fire equipment that was purchased in the city of Latrobe was purchased by the firemen. Your so-called consultants in the fire department, his, whatever you want to call it, papers there with his background, once he started, didn't mean the lick to me. They weren't worth the paper they were printed on. When Mr. Mullins, number five, tried to inform him how the fire department makes their money, he said they're still taxpayers. Nearly everybody in the United States is a taxpayer, even a kid going to buy a toy pays sales tax. But after we're done paying our taxes, which we have to, the money we have left, we give to organizations that's concerned citizens. When I give a check to, let's say, Action for Animals, I'm giving it on my own free will as a free citizen. There's no one putting a gun to my head. Back in, as I said, 1970s, the price of fire equipment doubled in just a couple of years. But we still made our payments. Number Three bought a new engine in 1978 for $92,000. $25,000 is donated from the company to help pay for that engine. But that was just part of it. We still bought another squad truck in that station. But it was more than $25,000. Whenever you join the fire department, it's probably one of the most expensive organizations you can join in the city. Every time you sell something, you sell something with someone in your family, probably. You have a bingo. Somebody in your family goes. Every time that siren blows, no matter what, it might be 20 below zero, 3 o'clock in the morning on a winter night, these people are going off. They know that at 6 o'clock, they were going to have to get up and go to work. They might even miss a day's pay. It just upsets me that you're worrying about buying an engine. When you're buying these two engines, basically, there are other equipment in that station that the companies have paid for by working. When someone would come into, number three up there, I would tell them, basically, right off the bat, "We owe you a soul for the next six months. Between meetings, drills, fires, we owe you." When it comes down to the maintenance of the building, who maintains those stations? "I've been going over your budget and looking." This building here, as I told you before, it's a big white elephant. You spend around $100,000 to maintain this thing. What blew my mind was $33,000 in electric bill. You're leaving a lot of lights on that night. You pay more in electric and gas for this building than all the utilities combined in four stations. You want to take away the two paid drivers. We could do it. We could be activated by 911. Realize you're cutting down your response time. No matter where that call is at in the city of Latrobe, there's firemen that live there that are waiting for that engine out of Centaur to get there. If you have a fire problem, once again, I can wait for a snowplow, fix a puddle. I like to say that I can even wait for a state trooper. But when you have a fire call, I want to see you in the next couple of minutes, no matter what time of day and the weather with my feet. We have to take care of all kinds of work. You just don't go, "There's another thing."
Mr. Bolton, can I say one thing?
What?
No, I just want to say one thing, okay? No one on this council said anything about any of this, okay? We never said we were doing it. These consultants come in, they make recommendations. They made all kinds of recommendations. They made recommendations that we need to hire a financial CFO. We're not going to be able to afford to do that. They make recommendations, and we look over the recommendations, and we take them with a grain of salt, and we decide which ones we're going to work with and which ones we aren't. Just because, I mean, they made a lot of recommendations in practically every department. There's no one on this council that I'm aware of that has said anything like what you're saying, that we're going to close these departments and these departments. You know, we recognize they do all their own fundraising and a lot of those things. I just wanted to be clear that we don't have any plans on doing that.
Why was it even brought up on the agenda floor?
Because it was part of the consultant's overall process. They had to look at every department, and they compare what's going on in our community with communities the same size. And when they look at communities the same size, they say, you know, based on your size and their size, and you're this and you're that, this is how it should look. But it doesn't have to look that way. And no one here has said anything since in the years that I've been on council about doing anything like that.
There were 34 slides presented that night. Two of them dealt with the fire. The report has about 600 pages to it, seems like by now, and maybe about 10 dealing with fire. As was clear that night, 4 percent of the budget is fire. Even if we were to cut 4 and 1/2 percent, you know, 10 percent, 20 percent, 30 percent of the fire's budget, the city had really achieved no substantial savings. As Chief Brazilli pointed out at the last meeting, it would cost $1.5, $2.5 million if the city wanted to have a paid fire department. We have nowhere near those resources. So, you know, really, 34 slides were presented that night. Two of them dealt with fire.
Realize the fact that fire companies operate like small businesses. The assets are handed on from generation to generation, and every generation improves upon that. As I said, I can live with a lot of things. I cannot live without fire protection.
Mr. Bolton, I can live without you hurling accusations our way, month after month after month, irrespective of what the subject is. You always come off high and mighty and sling the arrows at us, which is your right.
Right.
But I'm tired of you standing there making false accusations. All we did, we had a consultant come in and review every facet of this city government, including the fire department. He based his findings on objective, measured standards that he uses irrespective, again, of whatever city he may be evaluating. They're all the same. He applied those standards to us, just as he did with everybody else that he's ever evaluated. And for you to demean his curricula vitae, he has an MBA and 40 years' experience as a firefighter. What more would you want?
I didn't see it.
Pardon me? Pardon me? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Get out of here. We don't need you.
What difference does it make to get another opinion from somebody else? There are people in this world that may have a better understanding on how to do things than we do. I mean, these people travel all over the country and make recommendations. I'm not saying that he's right or wrong. I'm just saying, what harm is there in hearing another perspective?
No one. There's no right or wrong. We're not placing any value judgments here. We're not making a value judgment. We're just looking at this objectively. That's all we're doing. No one on this council has ever recommended that we close a station, fire our duty drivers. No one.
Let's say we're both, which in our opinion, no. Hopefully, it never does happen.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Don Greider with ALSME on behalf of the city employees at the transfer station in here at City Hall. Just real briefly, I want to follow up on what I talked about last month.
Mr. Greider, may I just talk a bit shorter?
No. Give me a minute.
All right.
Very simply, no.
Five minutes.
No. Very simply, I just wanted to point out that we brought it to your attention that no negotiations had occurred with respect to the planned contracting out, or the subcontracting of work at the transfer station. I just wanted to let you know that as of today, there has been no negotiation. I talked with Mr. Graziani. He said the question may be answered tonight. So I'm all good with that. But I did want to point out, so that there's no misunderstanding, there hasn't been the negotiation that's required by law. The other thing that I wanted to comment on very briefly, and this touches on one of the consultants, too. Some of my members were here at the last meeting, and they said that, one of these consultants said that there is no reason that she, as a businessperson, would want to keep the transfer station. Well, you know, the last gentleman was questioning credentials. I'm questioning that, whoever made that comment, I'm questioning their judgment, not their credentials, because in the past two years, our transfer station made $2 million. The best estimate we can get on the net was $900,000 last year. So I would just take this opportunity to urge you to take a real good look at these consultants, because if somebody's telling you that a $900,000 net profit isn't worth having, they just, they shouldn't be in business, and they shouldn't be advising other people on it. Thank you.
Mr. Greider, may I address you now?
Sure.
I'd like to apologize for the city for failing to meet with you. You are correct. Management should have been meeting with you, and they still should be meeting with you, to resolve the problems of removing the employees from trucking the waste. I didn't realize that we could not do that without penalty, and that's why I was in favor of that contract.
Okay.
But I learned only Friday before the Monday that our legal counsel, very well, highly touted legal counsel, in my opinion, changed his opinion, because the meeting I attended with you, he told us, and he said that yes, the city could, in fact, get rid of the drivers.
Okay.
So if there's an apology due, I'm going to give it to you. And I do hope that in the future, that management does meet with the union and work out any grievances that you have during the time or prior to the time we try to make a decision.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Jimmy.
You're quite welcome, sir.
But I have talked to Alex. We're setting up dates. We're actually in the process of it. I just have to go back, look at my calendar, and we're going to get some dates together. But I do appreciate what you said, and hopefully, we can get past this and move on. Thank you.
And I do, you stated the last two years' figures. Do you have the five years before that figures, and what the transfer station made?
I don't have them with me, but I did, no, let me finish. And don't give me exactly. I'm not here to get smart comments. I'm here to get good answers. I did look at the profits and of the gross revenue, and it has, the gross revenue of the transfer station has actually increased steadily for the past 10 out of 11 years. And there was one year, the year of the storm, where there was a spike. That was almost three years ago now. But it has grown steadily for 10 years, was it, Claire?
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
More or less, but you need to go back and look at them figures a little bit harder.
Oh, no, I don't. No, I don't. And everybody that works there looked at it. And Joe Bush knows it, and the city manager knows it.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Susan Leonard, and I live on Calhoun Street. The reason I'm addressing you this evening is, there is an article in the Tribune Review on July 1st on the Delmont Police Department starting, they have done for the last several years, their patrols, and they do it on a beat. They walk the beat. My question is, is it possible to have the Latrobe Police Department walk their beat in the manner that the Delmont Police Department does? Because the crime has increased in this community as it has everywhere else.
If we have manpower, there's no problem.
I talked to a Delmont police officer today. They have 13 police officers. I don't know what the full-time, part-time, when police officers are out on patrol, if it's two in a car or one in a car, on their shift, they park the car, they walk a beat, they get a call, they get back to the car. There's, I have the article right here if you'd like to read it.
That's fine. What I'm telling you is, if we have manpower.
But you do, because they only have two police officers every shift, and sometimes one. And they're out walking the beat.
Why don't you come ride with us somewhere?
I'd love to.
Please.
I would love to, but he said, "Walking the beat," it's incredible, because they're out there, it's community service that they're providing.
My main concern is the safety of this town and the safety of my officers. And if I have a car parked over by the hospital with an individual out walking the beat a block or two away, and there's a fight over cheetos with my other officer.
Well, then they, right, then they would go back to the car and get to their, how many?
Sometimes I'll ask you.
Well, it's just how many.
Hey, Chief, does Delmont cover all 24/7?
I have no idea.
Or are they, I mean, I think it's.
Well, it's also, it's different hours. I don't think that they're doing the beat probably at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, but I think it deserves some investigation. I have, my neighbor within the last two weeks has had attempted break-ins to his home.
We've talked about this many times, Sue, and.
But I can also tell you, I talked to the cop today, he does it in the winter, because it here says just the summer. He said he does it in the winter as well.
It's something that we've talked about before, and I think we need to revisit it, Jim, don't you?
Well, you know, Rosie, like, most of the summer, it's me and another guy on daylight.
Right, because we have vacay, yeah. I think it, I'm curious, you know the chief in Delmont, probably?
No, I don't. I don't even know the chief.
Okay. But it might be interesting to talk to them and see what issues they run up against.
I'd like, you know, you have to see the call ratio and.
Well, yeah, that's true.
I think there's a lot of variables that could play into that, but I think it's worth investigating, because I think the presence of the police officer, the gentleman I spoke to today, a police officer said, "It's surprising what they walk upon. It's also surprising that it's a deterrent to see the police officers walking the beat." So I think it's just something that they should take into consideration and investigate. Thank you.
My name is Nicola Waltor. I'm 513 Weldon Street. I have a question for anybody on the council or the city manager. How much does it cost to hire a consultant? Anybody?
Depends on a consultant, but I think these consultants at Delta Development was $86,000 for their report.
And I think 50 percent of that was paid for with a grant from the state?
Now, we hired a consultant for the cable franchise, and I've been informed their fee is $18,000 for the, no, what is it there, Mr. Manager?
If you look at your report, you have the figures in front of you. I think it's $8,000 for the negotiating, $8,900 negotiating, and $7,500 for the reviewing our current agreement with them and doing an audit of their current proposal.
So that comes to what? $15,500?
If you combine the two, they'll do it for $13,000.
They did, I think, this time. So it's roughly $13,000 for our 13.
And just to give you an idea, they're looking at a 15-year agreement for $1.5 million for a franchise agreement. So the thought is, if you want to spend $13,000.
You can answer. You can speak to him. I just thought I gave the figure that I heard that was.
The thought is, if you, for the cable agreement, over 10 years, the life of the agreement will be $1.5 million. Should the city spend $13,000 to increase that by $100,000 or $200,000, I think that's a pretty good idea. Back to the Delta consultants, this city in 10 years will spend $50 million out of the general fund. I'll repeat that. $50 million out of the general fund. To spend $86,000 to determine how to best spend $50 million is really not a bad deal when you consider that doesn't include parking, which is over $200,000 annually, doesn't include the capital budget, which also ranges in the millions. So again, for a city to spend $86,000 over two years to decide how it's going to spend $50 million over 10 years, that's what we're looking at. And it's the same thing with the cable franchise. My estimation is, we may be getting underpaid by the cable company as it is now. By doing the audit, it'll determine whether or not we're being underpaid. If we're underpaid, the cable company owes us money. Going forward with the new agreement, by negotiating a stronger agreement than one we have, we'll both protect the customer interests in this city, which right now, we have no choice. Verizon is not making an attempt to do Fios here. We're stuck with Comcast for at least five years, if not longer. Therefore, it's in the city's best interest, both the customers, residents, the payers, and the city, to spend a little money to make sure we hold a company with, what, half a billion or $2 billion worth of assets, hold their feet to the fire. When we go into the negotiating room, we go in with big boys. They're not looking to give us any breaks. We have to go in with firepower that ensures every cable customer in this city, every taxpayer in this city gets the best deal available. So, yeah, sure, it's money. It's your money. It's taxpayer money. Is the money well spent? Time will tell. But prudence tells you, in order to save money, in order to make money, you need to be willing to spend money. And sometimes, you have to go to the table with the best you got.
May I, and also, I think we hire a labor consultant and a special attorney for labor consultation. You know, are there any others we are?
For the first time with a internal order of police, and I don't know how many contracts we've avoided binding arbitration.
I understand that. I'm not trying to justify. He's asking actually what it costs, and that's what I was hoping we could give him. So is that, your questions being answered, sir?
That was my first question. The second question I have is, there's an alleyway between Ridge Avenue and Truman Avenue, between Weldon and Spring, that I want to know how much it would cost to fix that alleyway. Anybody have a best estimate?
Joe?
What's wrong with that?
You have to look at it.
It's a pothole central.
I'm sure Joe would have to take a look at it to put a number on it, right, Joe?
I mean, people drive down it. I'm surprised, ball bearings, or tires don't go flat, or things like that. I'm just saying, if you want to use money to hire consultants, I'm just thinking maybe, you know, look at things that might need done in the city.
I may be wrong, but I think a 400-foot alley, or whatever the distance is, would probably be close to $40,000, maybe $60,000 to do it properly. Is that direct, Joe?
To do it properly.
Yeah.
I think we should take a look at it and perhaps see what I can do as far as patching it, make it presentable for anybody that's traveling it.
That's all.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you. We've got a committee reports.
Madam Mayor, on behalf of the garbage committee, I'd like to report that, first of all, I note that the budget, excuse me, the budget shows that we've budgeted $700,000 as expected revenue at the transfer station, and to date, we've taken in $246,291. We are substantially off budget in that regard. The other thing that I'd like to note is, is the last meeting, there was a recommendation by the garbage committee that we increase the minimum at the scales for the first 200 pounds from $8 to $12. And even though Delta Development doesn't seem to be the favorite son today, I would point out that in their early intervention program and five-year plan, on page 65, if you want to look, the transfer station, a transaction cost, a transaction cost, they say, is $13.98. So that if anybody that brings out 200 pounds, we're charging you $8. And according to Delta Development, the cost is $13.98. You know, Madam Mayor, I think something should be done about that. I hate to see us lose money on those minimum costs. And perhaps, we were headed in a correct direction, that is, the garbage committee, when we recommended that the flat fee be $12, and then the balance appropriated. That would conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committees? Municipal authority?
If I may, Madam Mayor, under another hat, the Latrobe Municipal Authority did render their appearance in reference to the appeal that was filed by the unity township municipal authority and the unity township supervisors. Rather than challenge the Department of Environmental Protection, the authority is in fact attempting to satisfy any deficiencies that they might have seen in our plan. And that's the end of our report.
Madam Mayor, if I may also.
Madam Mayor, if I may also mention at this point, because of time constraints, I also entered my appearance on behalf of the city in the appeal to the environmental hearing board, the reason being that part of that appeal addresses an agreement that was signed not only by various municipal authorities, but also by the city back in 1973. And I have so much time, I'm releasing my appearance on behalf of the city, so my appearance is now entered. If council chooses otherwise, then you need to let me know, and I can always draw my presence. But my position would be to enforce that agreement, or to assist in enforcing of the agreement that was entered into by the city and Unity Township and various entities.
Is there any hearing for planning, commission, soul service, parking, park and recs? Okay, department reports, chief, please.
We had a busy week this week with the Fourth of July. I just want to compliment my own officers for a job well done. We had no major events. Was busy, a lot of incidents, but nothing major. Guys did a real good job. We did bring in extra guys for the activities down the midway and the fireworks, and things went pretty well. Also want to report on the status of accreditation with the department. We're about three-quarters of the way done. We need to do a few renovations in the building. We need to add lighting to the cells, and we need to secure City Hall, the police side from City Hall, the administrative side. There's a couple other minor things. In the evidence locker, we have the cage, the evidence, split it apart, drugs from guns, and guns for regular evidence. So there's a lot of things that we're undergoing right now. It's real busy work. That's about it. We're looking forward to Steeler Day coming up in August, and it's going to be another busy time with a lot of people in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also would like to take time to thank my department, who took time away from their families over this Fourth of July celebration, took their time to go out and serve the community. Free and Five went down and took care of the detail, providing fire protection for the fireworks. The parade went off without a hitch. We had a lot of guys from the department on that committee, took care of traffic control duties, and I just want to commend them for the job they've done over the Fourth, and for taking time away from their families. We still have an issue with fireworks. People need to be aware that they're illegal. There's people setting them off. I know who they are, and for some reason they're let go. Mr. Marx across the creek here appears to have his own display every year, and nothing's ever done to him. The houses are closed, we'll let them cause a fire. Little do you people know, maybe you do, maybe you don't. The city is liable for a fire caused by the fireworks. It's illegal. They're not to be sold or used. There's an ordinance. Same with these fire pits. Our pits are open burning. If you want to burn them, move to the top. You have an ordinance here. I get a lot of calls, I take time away from my family, I get a lot of firework calls. I don't even enjoy the Fourth. Some of my guys don't. You got the ordinances, all I'm saying is you need to enforce them.
Madam Mayor-
I'm sorry. Oh, how is it? Sorry.
You're on, you're on. Madam Mayor, members of council, there aren't that many items tonight. The first item appears under the Police Department. It is a resolution giving you the abridged version, it's approving an agreement for police services with St. Vincent College and authorizing entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Unity Township. You read section one, that the council, the city of Latrobe, thereby authorizes entering into an agreement for police services with St. Vincent as more fully described and set forth on an agreement attached as Exhibit A. And section two authorizes the mayor, secretary, city manager, and any other proper city officer to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary. The agreement itself is fairly basic. It outlines three different levels of services. One would be emergency services for those matters where police would be called out anywhere. Special events, where advanced notice would be given to the chief to schedule the officers to be there during those special events. And then a weekend night patrol, two hours per weekend, that the police would patrol the college. The rate of compensation is $95 per hour for these services. And that pretty much is what the agreement is all about. The procedure would be, if council desires to approve this, we would approve the agreement first with St. Vincent, then there would be an intergovernmental cooperation agreement presented to Unity Township to allow our officers to come into their jurisdiction. And then thirdly and lastly would be the consent of the Pennsylvania State Police. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion?
Sound move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldnary, second.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forrest, any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have several questions. First of all, how long is the agreement expected to last?
It is, initially for a year, then thereafter it's month to month.
All right. I believe that the police do cost us about $95 an hour. I'm not quite sure that we can send a policeman up there for two hours and collect, what would be $190. I wonder if that couldn't be so fashioned that no, anytime we send a policeman there, we charge a minimum of a half-day? Because I do think it takes you out of the course of whatever they are doing and sends you on another course. It's like interrupting your dinner, and you have to go up there. I just wonder if we shouldn't be charging more. I mean, I think we should do it, but I'm just wondering if the price is right.
I can answer that now, and how has this price arrived?
We had several meetings with campus staff, Chief, Jim and I, to discuss what it is that the campus had in mind, you know, to meet their needs. And so it was based on the discussions of what events they might ask us to be there, and in what nights of the week, or what times or shifts of the week would they expect, you know, occasional patrols. As many of you realize or may know, we do, for example, purchase our gasoline at the gas station at the corner right outside of the campus there off 981. So our police officers are making a directional, you know, hit that way. But Jim, you have any more to add? I mean, I'm not opposed to what Richard's saying. In my mind, you know, as we move forward, the hour would be, you know, the hours would be accumulated and build, you know-
I'm just worried about the administrative nightmare of collecting time, punching a clock, keeping an accurate record of distance traveled, things of that nature. You know, it becomes an administrative burden, and also it, I just think we should get more money. One year, maybe take a look-see, and, you know, and then try to develop a more realistic approach to the cost, because the police department does cost us $5,000 a day, when you add in all the expenses and everything else. So we have to know that we can at least recoup our costs, and are somewhat close to the cost. That's all. That's my only comment, and I hope that you do look at it in that fashion.
Has it been discussed with regard to the special events? Would these be officers that are off-duty, they would be assigned to these special events?
Any activity that we will be involved in with St. Vincent would not take away from the city's safety.
Except for emergencies? If there was an emergency on campus, I mean, the officers that were working-
Right now.
Yeah.
That would happen now.
Right. It wouldn't be any different than it is now.
Right. And the weekend night patrols, would those be done by officers on duty or off duty?
It would be like, I can't really comment on how we would exactly do it, but if, like Alex said, if we were out for gas, we'd do a drive-through, something like that. It would be, it's not, we're not going to be concentrating time there like we would be patrolling in the city.
Well, they were talking about a two-hour weekend night patrol. Would that be two hours, a block of time?
No. It would be sporadically.
Okay. Are you in favor of this, Jim?
Yes, I am. I think it opens some doors for a lot of things in the future. Plus, it is, like, the contract is one year. Who's to say they're going to even want us in a year? They want to see how it works, too. I think it's a good idea. I think there's other organizations, other institutions that are interested, and they're sitting back and waiting to see how this works out, too.
Yeah, I have to agree with Richard with regard to the, what we're charging them. It seems a little on the low side, but that being said-
We need to make sure we're at least covering our costs, and we should be making a little money off of it. And I think we'll know better after a year, but let's make sure at least in the first year that we're not losing money. I mean, are you comfortable with that, Mark?
We're not going to lose money. I'll make sure we don't lose money. I mean, we're not going to do it if we lose money. Like I said, it's a trial, an error-type year. They might not even be comfortable with it. They have their own police force that's Act 120 certified, but they're not allowed to carry firearms due to the college's policy. We are going to be working with them. As far as the state police, I think it's more of a courtesy, a professional courtesy, if we're clearing it with them, talking with them, because according to the Municipal Police Jurisdiction Act, if we're contracted out, we don't have to have their permission. But to talk to them and run it by them, there's not going to be the us and them kind of feeling when we respond.
And really, isn't it Unity Township that should have the police force?
I-
Good luck with that.
I guess that's sort of a-
Tongue-in-cheek.
Yeah, tongue-in-cheek statement.
And they call it a rhetorical question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly.
To read the trivia review, the editorial staff once again suggested supervisors in city council have a discussion about joint police force.
Asshole, colleague! Asshole!
Did you find that, chief?
You don't want to know. I'll tell you after the meeting.
Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the Administration and Finance Department. It is a very brief resolution authorizing the city manager to hire the Cohen Law Group to represent the city in cable television franchise agreement negotiations. Now therefore be resolved, section one, the council of the city of Latrobe, hereby authorized to approve the city manager negotiating an agreement with the Cohen Law Group to represent the city of Latrobe in forthcoming negotiations with Comcast for a franchise agreement. And section two authorizes the mayor, secretary, manager, and any other city officer to be, to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry to effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined. I might add that when we last negotiated a contract, we did have special counsel for that, at that point. His name was Mr. Paul Marby, he has since moved to Connecticut. So we did engage with special counsel in the last negotiation.
May I have a motion?
Sound move, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Scapora, any questions or discussion?
Is, excuse me, Mr. Kelly, is the city manager the only one that is going to have the authority to negotiate this contract, or will it be with the advice and consent of the mayor? What is the resolution?
The resolution basically indicates it would be the city manager who would do this. That's his function.
Is this similar to the other contracts that we haven't negotiated? I guess what I'm asking, is he solely going to make this decision? Answer is yes.
Yes, if council passes this resolution. I think we've already outlined what the potential cost would be, which is roughly $13,430 if I'm not wrong. I did see the proposed agreement, and that is the figure if we do both. I would certainly recommend that we do the audit, and if for no other reason to tell Comcast, we will do an audit. And if they are doing something, I don't want to use the word improper, but if they're not making the proper payments, they're going to know in the next contract that we have that ability and that desire perhaps to do another audit, so-
So, Mr. Kelly, there are guidelines for the manager that he has set forth, or you've set out?
I'm not sure what you mean by guideline.
Well, the price.
Yes, the price, the maximum price would be $13,430 if I'm not off. I think that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, pardon.
This is Resolution 201337. Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is six yes.
Motion, Karen.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the Administration and Finance Department. It is a resolution as well. The resolution is entitled, "Requesting Grant Funding from the Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for the Lincoln Avenue Trail and Greenway Park," and that would be the trail area that was formerly the railroad up near Lincoln Avenue. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Latrobe requests a Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Lincoln Avenue Trail and Greenway Park. The applicant does hereby designate Alexander J. Graziani, city manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the city and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. And section three authorizes the mayor, secretary, city manager, and any other proper city officer to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry to effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion?
Sound move, Madam Mayor.
Boldnary, second, please.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, any questions or discussion?
Just one point of clarification, as the representative on the Park and Rec Board, there is no taxpayer, this isn't, this, the city has to be the applicant, but there's, the city at this point is putting no funding into it, is that correct, Alex?
What we're doing is really replicating the grant we submitted to DCNR. As you know, the DCNR grant program for $250,000 is a very competitive program. This new program is funded with Marcela Shell funding. What we're looking at doing is the same exact match commitment that we already approved by council for that DCNR grant we're doing for this. It's not a double. We're, I believe it was $35,000 for that program. That would be a total of $500,000 improvement to the facility. $250 from the state, another $250 raised locally. $500,000 improvement to the facility. $250 from the state, another $250 raised locally. $35,000 of that would be city taxpayer dollars.
Over how long a period of time?
We would have at least two years to be able to cover that. The thought was, this is another pot of money for the same kind of funding for acquisition, for planning, for programming, and development of parks, trails, recreation. If we don't get the DCNR one, maybe we'll get this one, or maybe we get both of them cut in half. The city's contribution will not exceed $35,000 in total. If we got both of them, it would still only be $35,000 because that's the match we committed to the project.
And we are committed?
Correct. We committed that, I believe, in the May meeting, or actually April, maybe.
It was close to the beginning of the year, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was earlier in the year, so there's no additional spending.
I just want to make it clear, because we might not get that other money, and we may get this, we may not get either of them, and then there's really no option.
Any other discussion or questions?
This is Resolution 201338. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There are six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, one more item which appears under the City Public Works Department. It is a motion. I'll simply read it, and it reads, I move to reject all bids for sanitation contracts submitted to the June 10, 2013 meeting period. At the meeting last month, we rejected the low bid, but we did not reject the high bid to make it clean. We are within a timeframe in which the bids were to be kept open. We should reject all bids so we can move on.
May I have a motion?
Sound move.
Mr. Scapora, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldonari, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Chair.
That's all that I have, Madam Mayor.
Ten's unfinished business? I'll bring anything unfinished. Okay, number one, new business?
Okay, Alex? My management report stands as reported to you. I recommend, you know, council take time to look over, particularly the budget overview. We have six months completed in the year. Every month that goes by, we get a little bit sharper focus of what our revenue and expenditure projections will be. It might be helpful for you to schedule appointments to discuss this with me, and even at the general meeting in July to go over in more detail. As you go through the report, there's a number of other issues related to, you know, the city's health care contract, related to parking revenues, of course, the franchise agreement, a lot of detail on that, and other issues, including an upcoming meeting with Unity Township to discuss the bridge closure and its impact on the transfer station and so forth. As always, I'm available for questions and certainly would like the opportunity to come in with you to discuss particulars or concerns that you have. Thank you.
Okay, my report. I just want to go along with what the police, our police chief and fire chief said about the Fourth of July activities, and want to thank them for all they do all the time for us. Thank you.
Oh, sanitation committee? Mr. Baldonari, Mr. Giavangelo, and Mr. Scapora. And the Police Department, Officer Dirk and Officer Shear said they would like to meet specifically with the Police Committee and anybody else who would like to meet with them. So if they want to get ahold of, who's on the mic? Mike Ken and Fabiano, the police, Ken, you and Mike. Well, if you would get ahold of those gentlemen, please.
Officer Dirk and Officer Shear.
They just wanted, they just, Police Committee, they just, I talked with the Office of Dirk Friday, and he said he would appreciate meeting with the committee. And if other people, anybody else at any time wants to meet, want to meet with them, that's fine. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Sound move.
Mrs. Wolfert? Mr. Jim, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion, Chair.